Call the meeting of October 9th, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Public comments regarding the closed session?
Public comments are invited on closed session agenda items only. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to comment on item C on your closed session agenda, which is your continuation of the performance evaluation of our city attorney, Erin Harp. As I said two weeks ago, I like Erin, but I continue to be concerned about the quality of legal advice the city receives. So I hope that in your discussions, you'll be encouraging an improvement in that quality. And I don't know where else you're going to hear honest criticism of the present quality other than from the public. And I am most definitely just a random member of the public with no legal experience, but there are numerous examples where even to a non-lawyer like me, it seems plainly clear the advice the city is giving has serious flaws. All one has to do is read for oneself the cases and laws that the city attorney cites. Two weeks ago, I mentioned the incorrectly prepared red light traffic camera prohibition, missing 12 words, that will be part of next month's proposed charter update, Measure EE, and a failure to alert you to an opportunity to defer Measure EE until 2014, when the bungled language could have been corrected at a savings of $80,000 to taxpayers instead of an extra cost. Tonight, I would like to give two more examples where the advice not only seems wrong, but could end up costing Newport Beach taxpayers much bigger money. The first relates to item four on the regular session agenda, which is a request by staff to continue indefinitely action regarding prevailing wages, a matter you were about to pass a resolution regarding at your last meeting. The report asserts we currently exempt certain city projects from prevailing wages and will continue to do so. The recommendation to continue that practice without a specific law permitting it is terrible advice, because it means that any person offended by it could sue our pants off. Now, our city does give, our charter, city charter, does give you the right to pass an ordinance making staffs' practice legal under limited circumstances in the future. But until you do so, you're clearly breaking state law. The California Supreme Court case that is alluded to in the staff report makes that very clear. My next example is the rather casual attempt to ban class claims against the city, which is part of Measure EE, again, being put to our voters next month. However you may feel about class actions, it would seem incumbent upon the city attorney to tell us that Measure EE would make Newport Beach, as far as I know, the first city in California and perhaps the nation to attempt such a ban, which flies directly in the face of state law and the Supreme Court ruling that supposedly suggested it. The advice given to the Charter Update Committee, and I was there, was basically, let's try sticking it in the charter and see if it works. I would submit that the cost of such legal experimentation can be substantial, and we would be well advised to let some other city do the experiment, which is almost certain to fail, because the processing of claims which may arise from outside our city is clearly not a municipal affair. Finally, I want to mention the problem of severability. Every statewide proposition I can recall and every ordinance I've seen you pass, including the one that is before you tonight, includes nerds in to clause saying that if any part of it is held to be invalid, it would still have been our intent to enact the rest. Measure EE has no such clause. Does that mean if some part, such as the illegal class claims prohibition, is found to be invalid, that the whole thing will be tossed out? I don't know, and I would be very skeptical of the advice you receive regarding that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Reconvene the meeting of October 9th, 2012. Roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Closed session report.
Mayor Gardner, there's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise for that, led by Councilwoman Daigle, and remain standing for the invocation from Melinda Blackman of the Harbor Christian Church.
Ready. Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in silent reflection. As we gather here tonight, help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. May we be reminded that we are stewards of this precious city. May we be the leaders our residents need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence all people deserve. And finally, may we be renewed with strength of joy from helping build a community worthy of the human person. Thank you.
Presentations, our first presentation. Cynthia Cowell, our library director, has a presentation of a donation check from the Friends of the Library for $187,000.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm back with another check. Again, it's like the holidays, when you get all kinds of presents and wonderful things. But this one is from the Friends of the Library. And quickly, to give you a little background on what this is all about, it's for books and programs, and we're looking at balancing our collection with more electronic books. So that's a piece of it, about $35,000 of it, we'll be spending on electronics for adults and children. And then $40,000 for a summer reading program, and for our family musicals and our Sunday musical programs, in addition to a couple of other smaller endeavors. So with that, I will invite Wendy Frankel up. She is the volunteer coordinator of the Friends.
Representing the Friends of the Library, 800 members and 110 people that faithfully work in the stores seven days a week, we want to give this gift to the library and to the city of New York. New York, well, that'd be nice, too, but Newport Beach this time. And $187,000, and we're proud to do that, and look forward to giving even more next time. And I have, if anyone doesn't belong and would like to, I have membership in board, if you can pick up outside.
$100,000 of that is just my book spot there. $100,000 of that is just my book spot there.
Thank you, mayor.
And now, if Dean O'Malley would come forward. Read this. Whereas on Saturday, right there, September 29th, Dean O'Malley and his Jet Lev Southwest crew set off to attempt a new aviation world record by flying a waterborne Jet Lev jet pack from the city of Newport Beach to Avalon on Catalina Island. Whereas Dean O'Malley left M Street Pier in Newport Beach at 7:00 AM and flew 26.2 miles over open ocean, and whereas Dean O'Malley and the Jet Lev Southwest crew achieved their goal of setting a world record for the longest jet pack flight by reaching Catalina Island in four and a half hours, and whereas Dean O'Malley and the Jet Lev Southwest crew planned the jet pack flight to coincide with the 100-year anniversary of aviator Glenn L. Martin's flight to Catalina Island. Now therefore, I, Nancy Gardner, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Dean O'Malley and Jet Lev Southwest for setting a new world record by flying the jet pack from the city of Newport Beach to Avalon on Catalina Island.
Mayor Gardner. Thank you. Mayor Gardner and the whole city council, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition. As a longtime Newport Beach resident, and now one year into our operation with Jet Lev Southwest, we're honored to be recognized for putting Newport Beach back on the map for a world record accomplishment. A hundred years ago, it was Glenn Martin who flew an airplane from here to Catalina and set a world record. Now we've set a world record with a jet pack. So it rings in the new era. It puts Newport Beach and the business back into the media and the news. We have tourists from around the country and around the world, and hopefully this will just encourage more people to come and visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harvard for this. That's right.
Notice to the public?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The city council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilman Hill?
I do have two announcements this evening. On Thursday, the 11th of this month, the Fire and lifeguard appreciation ceremony will take place at Newport Beach at 6:00 PM, and certainly invite the public to go. It's a great party and a great opportunity to thank our public safety officers and the fire lifeguard for the fine job that they do each and every year for Newport Beach. So I would encourage everyone to go to that. It's a fun event, good food, and good beach party. And then on the 19th, for those that are more academically inclined, there will be an economic forecast panel held by the chamber once again that will take place at Newport Beach Marriott Hotel and Spa. And there will be three panelists. John Campbell, our 48th Congressional District Representative, Andrew Polikano, the dean of the College of Business at UCI, and David Young, an investment strategist, will be the panelist. It promises to be a very enlightening morning, and that will be 7:30 to 9:00 AM on Friday the 19th. Once again, everyone is encouraged and invited to attend.
Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
No items.
Councilwoman Daigle?
I have none.
Councilman Hen?
Two quick items. This Saturday, at the Balboa Pier, in the park next to the pier, the Balboa Village Music Fest will take place between, from 1:00 PM to about 10:00 PM. There will be a full venue of artists performing on two stages all day long. Tickets are $45 for the whole day of fun. So I encourage everyone to come out and come to the Balboa Village Music Fest down by the Balboa Pier. And then I also had the pleasure of attending the Fire Safety Day at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station this past Saturday with my daughter and son-in-law and three grandchildren. It was a great event, lots of fun for everybody. The kids got their pictures taken with firemen and got to see how a fire is put out and all of, oh, and the jaws of life in operation. So it was really a nice event, and I really encourage our citizens to take advantage of that, especially families. Just a lot of fun. Thank you.
Councilman Selich?
Just one quick one. On October the 22nd, there's going to be a special event at the Newport Beach Public Library. Peter Boland, the architect for our new civic center, is going to be giving a talk on the new civic center of vision for the future. It's an opportunity to meet the architect behind the civic center design and learn about his vision for this multifaceted facility, the inspiration behind his contemporary design, and the distinctive features that we have there that are going to serve our community for years to come. The event is free, it's open to the public. Space is limited, so if you're interested in coming and hearing the architect for our civic center present his vision, I would suggest getting there early. It's at 7:00 PM, October 22nd, in the Central Library Friends Room.
This Saturday, October 13th, at 9:00 AM, paddle with the mayor. Stand-up paddlers, kayakers, surf skis are taking off from Chinatown Cove at 9:00 AM. I hope some of you will join me. We're going to paddle around the island. Then, in the last week of October, we will be installing the Sheroes in Cronin Del Mar. These are the signs on the pavement that all they do is elucidate what is currently law, that bikes have equal room right to the right-hand lane when there are no bike lanes proper. We will have some new signage up, and we're going to have some fun banners to remind people. So that will be same road, same rules. Now I hope this will make our roads a little bit safer. And finally, last night, I attended the first meeting of the mayor's youth council, 65 high school students from our area. And we're always saying things like, well, isn't it nice? We know the future's in good hands. Well, I think the future's now. These kids were making, nominating speeches for office, and I think we better start looking over our shoulder. They're really sharp and very, very ambitious, but it was a very impressive group, and I look forward to working with them in the future. Now for the consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 13, are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilwoman Daigle?
I have none.
Councilman Hen?
Item number four.
Councilman Selich?
I have none.
Councilman Hill?
None, thank you.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Yeah?
I have none. Staff?
We're going to just ask that you consider the amended, the amendments in paper to the item about the, it's item 12, about the council's investment policy.
All right. Anyone from the public wish to have an item removed from the consent calendar?
Mayor Gardner, my name is Jim Mosher. Items 1, 7, and 10.
Thank you. All right, item number one. Oh, I'm sorry, that's a motion first. Go ahead.
I would move the adoption of the consent calendar with the exception of items 1, 4, 7, 12 being amended, and I would note my own abstention on item 12.
And item 10?
And item 10, yes.
Second.
Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the titles. For item 3, ordinance number 2012-21, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach repealing Section 9.04.060, the Newport Beach Municipal Code, and adopting a new Section 9.04.060 of Title IX, Chapter 9.04, to remove Section 610 breathing air replenishment system bars. Okay, and item 12, resolution number 2012-90, a resolution of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, finding consistency with stated investment objectives and amending city council policy F1, statement of investment policy to clarify and streamline administrative procedures. With that, the motion carries unanimously. All right, item number one.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, this item is your approval of minutes from the past two meetings. I usually submit written comments about this. There are some problems still remaining with the minutes for September 25th, 2012. My name is Jim Mosher. If you look at page 609, in the September 25th minutes, volume 60, page 609, and try to follow the sequence of paragraphs here, you will see that they're badly out of order. It's too tedious to explain what has to go where, but the deputy clerk is aware of this being out of order, and I would suggest that you adopt the minutes with a directive to the clerk to put the paragraphs in the proper order. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Or is there a further public comment on this item?
Move through the item.
Second.
With the, you want to make the, all right. All right. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number four, Councilman Hen?
Yes, I pulled this item because I'm concerned that continuing this to some indefinite time period will make it possible for it to just sort of die and go away. And I think it is important for council to consider this item and make a clear statement with regard to prevailing wage. So I'd like to move approval of this item with the proviso that it's continued to the second council meeting in January.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Do we have public comment? Further discussion from the council? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item number seven?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This item, as I understand it, is the allocation of $4.3 million of taxpayer money for the city to purchase a piece of private property adjacent to the new coastline college campus on Monrovia Avenue in West Newport, a deal that appears to have been approved in recent closed-session meetings. I would have thought that before beginning those negotiations, the wisdom of acquiring this property would have been discussed publicly. The ostensible reason for buying it is that we might someday want it as a site for a community center, as I understand from the report, even though we already have a community center just a few doors away on 15th Street, which is the same street this property is on, and apparently are planning to build yet another community center at a site on our corporate yard. In view of that, I would have thought that another critical role of this property would at least have been mentioned in the report and publicly discussed. That is the fact that an extension of 15th Street to connect Newport Beach to the proposed Bluff Road of the 1,375-unit private development on Banning Ranch will go over this land. It would seem to me if we were buying the property, even in part to make life easier for a private developer, then we should, that developer should be picking up part of the tab. And in addition, if we need a community center to serve their many new residents, it would also seem reasonable they should be helping to provide the land for that purpose. Beyond that, it seems to me to be an example of the casual way in which we toss around large sums of money and the care we supposedly lavish on much smaller ones. Mayor Gardner, in Sunday's Daily Pilot, you have a column explaining, as our mayor, why we should vote for next month's charter update called Measure EE. And in it, you explain why 38 different mostly unrelated amendments have been bundled into a single vote. You ask your readers to imagine the outrage that would be heaped on the council if the voters had been given an opportunity to vote on, say, 10 separate issues at a cost of a few thousand dollars each. Yet here, you apparently see nothing wrong with spending $4.3 million of those same voters' money on a property we may or may not have use for, and no one would have been approving on the consent calendar another half million dollars for furniture at the library expansion. I don't know how you value the cost of disenfranchising the electorate, but I would submit that the real outrage is here, and that you try to correct the balance either by enfranchising the voters or by reconsidering this purchase. Thank you.
Is there other public comment on this item?
Thank you, Robert Hawkins. I'm a resident in the city of Newport Beach. The staff report is interesting in that it omits some of the history of this property. This property, I was formerly on the planning commission from 2004 until January of this year. In about 2009, 2008, this property was part of a residential development for which there was environmental documents and so on and so forth. The planning commission was not receptive to the project and sent it back. Subsequently, while the environmental document was pending, the developer applicant, landowner, created the parcel that you see with the northerly, I guess that's actually westerly edge of the property, moved across the right-of-way. The right-of-way originally, or the property line originally, was in the center line of 15th Street. The property owner requested a lot-line adjustment to move the property line northerly. The zoning administrator saw nothing wrong with that. I did. I saw that as creating the very problem that you've got right now. So I appealed that to the planning commission. The planning commission turned that appeal down five to two to uphold the zoning administrator's decision, and I requested that this body appeal it further. No one declined, no one agreed to do that. So what we have, because of that lot-line adjustment, we have the city spending money that it doesn't need to spend. Now, with respect to the agreement itself, it does say, and the city does have, under section C, the city has the authority to acquire property for public uses utilizing the city's power of eminent domain. I don't know exactly what the impact of the recent charter amendments in connection with the power of eminent domain have on that, but I think they have some bearing. And in order for the city to acquire the property under eminent domain, it would have to adopt, it would have to follow the procedures in the code of civil procedure, adopt resolutions of necessity and so forth. The city hasn't done any of that. As a matter of fact, I believe that the city probably should have done some environmental in this acquisition so that we can understand what's going on. That hasn't happened. I encourage you to vote no and reconsider this action. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll move the action.
Second.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Item 10, Mr. Mosher?
Thank you again, Mayor Gardner and members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher. This item is your approval of a response to the Orange County grand jury regarding their recent report on the need for cities to make clear and transparent to the public the amounts of their tax dollars being paid in compensation to their employees, both in salary and benefits, which includes in particular elected officials such as yourselves. I would like to begin on a very positive note, which is to compliment our city manager on our proposed response, which is basically to say that transparency is important to us and that we have room for improvement here in Newport Beach. I like that because I looked at some of the responses on the grand jury's website from other cities, and was surprised to see many of them basically telling the grand jury to butt out regarding something they felt was none of their business. That said, with regard to your own compensation, I have to agree with the city manager that there is room for improvement, for unlike in many other Orange County cities, the public has no way of knowing how much each of you by name is cost- has no way of knowing how much each of you by name is costing us and for what, and beyond that, how much our former council members may be costing us. And still beyond that, even if the city website disclosed the exact dollars and cents being paid to each of you individually, an element of transparency that is missing is that there is no rational basis for any of the health and retirement benefits being paid to you, which is the largest part of your cost. Indeed, it is completely irrational, for we have a city charter saying you should receive no compensation for your service, but only a nominal reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses. You have told us that despite what the charter says, your hands are tied because some 20 years ago, the IRS published something suggesting staff had to make those payments for health and pension benefits to you. I rather doubt anyone actually bothered to ask the IRS if that interpretation was correct, and even if they did, I would submit the proper dialogue would have been to consider how staff could have changed their ways to avoid a violation of the charter. I suspect it would have been as simple as asking you to submit receipts for your actual expenses. If not, I certainly suspect there would have been and still are several ways that the charter could have been amended to retain its original intent and not run afoul of any IRS provisions. Or you could have been so bold as to ask voters to provide you to be legally paid salary and benefits and lifetime benefits, just like employees. But that would have been a serious enough question that in any other city than here, it would have been put to the electorate as a separate vote. Do we want to make that change or not? Instead, you and staff chose a path of questionable legality without asking anyone's blessing, and now 20 years later, you are asking voters to ratify that single choice by slipping it in with some 35 other charter amendments in Measure EE on November 6th. We're giving your way or no way. That's our choice. We are told in your ballot arguments to us that Measure EE will make your entitlement to compensation clear and transparent, but it does nothing of the sort. It simply re-characterizes your expense allowance as salary, and at least one of the Charter Update Committee members assumed that amount quoted in the charter included all your benefits. My understanding is it does not, but there is no written contract that we have with you as employees, if you think of yourself as employees, so no one knows what you're entitled to or not. Measure EE may legalize your compensation, and it may make you feel less guilty, but no matter how carefully it's listed on the city website or in how much detail, your basic entitlement to these benefits will be neither clear nor transparent. And since the red light has not come on, I might mention that Mayor Protam Curry had something in the paper suggesting that the reason that this is compensation for expenses and not salary is a tax dodge invented by a former council. I would like to remind our respected Mayor Protam that the original charter was written by the citizens of Newport Beach, not by any former city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Mr. Kiff, I've got some handouts for you. The issue of compensation in connection with Measure EE is definitely murky. It is not transparent. We submitted a rebuttal argument in connection with the argument in favor of Measure EE and received a letter from the city clerk's office. The city clerks believe that what we said was false and misleading, threatened us with a lawsuit, and required us to amend it. We ultimately decided to amend it, but I believe it create... And I believe her response and our misunderstanding creates problematic issues so that the transparency of council compensation is not clear at all. And with respect to the Measure EE issues... And bear with me for one moment. The proposed Section 402 is very, very unclear, and this is the new amendment, because it says, "The mayor shall receive as compensation..." Compensation, right? "...an additional amount of $513.96 per month to reimburse the mayor for expenses." Well, now, if they're expenses, they're not going to be adjusted pursuant to the cost of living, right? No, because this is really compensation. So this is still... This still remains a problem, and Mr. Curry was right when he said that 402B, which was the calculus under which the council gets paid now as an allowance for expenses, is very, very unclear. But this is unclear as well, and no one has corrected it. So the charter as proposed still has that residual unclarity. Thank you very much, and I encourage you to vote no on Measure EE.
That's a good way of getting in on an issue that was perhaps not quite what you were talking about. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none?
Madam Mayor, could I just ask the city attorney, because this is something that our opponents here in this campaign keep repeating. First of all, does Measure EE in any way increase the compensation of anybody sitting on the city council?
No. Measure EE does not change the amount of compensation or payments to the council members in any way. Not one council member will receive one penny more than they are receiving today after it has passed.
Now, Mr. Mosher made reference to things that happened 20 years ago. In fact, as I understand it, the city council was made eligible for health insurance in 1974, which by my calculation is 38 years ago, so you only missed it by almost 100%. But does this do anything about the eligibility about health insurance that's been provided now for 38 years?
No. If the charter update's adopted, and when it is, it's not going to change the medical benefits or the retirement formula for the council members. Councilors are considered employees under the IRS rules, and they're required to participate in the retirement system, and they're entitled to the medical benefits, and nothing will change after the election after the charter update is approved.
And the part about pensions is contained, as I understand it, in a different section of the charter that's not being amended at all in Measure EE. Is that correct?
No, you're absolutely correct, Councilman Curry.
So when people get up there and sort of blow smoke and mirrors and suggest that there's some compensation issues, there's really... After the Charter Review Commission committee has looked at this, there is really no validity to these claims, are there?
You're absolutely right.
Thank you. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I did want to make one comment about the item itself versus this discussion about the charter, and that is, the city's made extraordinary progress in terms of... And thanks to our employees, too, for paying into these pensions, so, I mean, the pendulum's really swung in another direction over the past few years.
Thank you. All right. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. Now it's time for public comments.
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I would, since I guess can comment anything I want to comment on, I would mention that I thought that the little dialogue between the Mayor Protam and the city attorney was very inappropriate. What I stood up here to talk to you about is an ordinance that is pending currently before you. This was introduced on September 25th. The ordinance number is 2012-22. It is an amendment to our contract with the CalPERS retirement system. Based on the staff report from September 25th, you have to wait 20 days before you can actually adopt the ordinance. I must admit, I was very busy at the time of your last meeting, so I didn't actually read the contract that is pending, and we'll be coming back at your next meeting, and I would direct you to page... To paragraph five of the amended contract. Paragraph four lists the various groups of employees who are in the CalPERS retirement system, which I take at our city attorney believes includes council members, even though I continue to think that is highly debatable. And the paragraph following that says that certain two groups of employees will be excluded from membership under the retirement law, and those two are police cadets and reserve officers, and I would like you to give serious consideration to including council members in that category before the ordinance comes back to you for approval in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and most of you know I'm on the Board of Directors for Speak Up Newport. My reason for coming up here tonight is I'd like to announce a meeting we're having tomorrow night. Tomorrow night is Wednesday, October the 10th. The meeting is called Cycling in Newport Beach: What You Need to Know. Our speakers are Tony Petros, who currently serves on the Newport Beach Cycling Safety Committee, and he will be our council member-elect after the November election for District Two, and we're also going to have Police J Johnson there. Again, it's tomorrow night, October the 10th, at the Newport Beach Yacht Club, 1,099 Bayside Drive. All of the information is available on our website at speakupnewport.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Gardner and council people, and I just wanted to thank you so much for your time right now. I wanted to remind everybody, it is bullying month. I actually have spoke at another council meeting, and I was informed from a council member who is lovely... Oh, sorry. Kimberly Memms, PO Box 1642, Newport Beach, California, 92659. You can look under YouTube, under Bullying Warrior, B-U-L-L-Y-I-N-G-W-A-R-R-I-O-R. We've got some serious issues going on, not only in Newport Beach, but it involves Costa Mesa, and it involves things that are going on in the schools and outside the schools. But I'm actually here to speak for many people, including our children, number one, who are very scared going to school. Teachers, number two, have actually resigned, who aren't working at, for example, Newport Heights Elementary School and some other schools around the district. The concerns are extremely serious. Again, I wanted to thank Councilman Henn for taking his time. My story was when my daughter's fifth-grade teacher had brought her toddler into the school for months, never imagining the principal confidentially would tell her it was me. Going through the retaliation and just trying to get the equal education and a safe environment my daughter deserved, we also lost a good teacher at that school because she was bullied out, and she took a stand also and didn't understand why the toddler was coming in and compromising the education of her students. What I want to go ahead and do is create a bill into law. I've actually worked with Assemblyman Mansour. Gary Monahan has been very kind at dropping everything, as well as David Taylor, to speak with me, read emails. I've actually sent something over to you all to look at and take very seriously. As a team and working together, we can stop anything from happening to other children. Haley Ketchum, I don't want her to be forgotten. I thought my daughter was the only victim. Haley Ketchum had been threatened to be murdered and raped by three athletes. Her voice is not forgotten by me. I found out this months later. We unfortunately have a pattern of behavior in our district at Newport-Mason Unified School District. It involves bullying, making parents and teachers feel afraid to come forward. When they come forward, it's almost a witch hunt, and they retaliate against good teachers and good families, and especially our precious children. We're hoping that we can create a bill, that we will be able to have you take the time to look at it. It's very important for us to look and stand up if a council member might be bullying somebody or an audience member. It needs to stop. We need respect for everyone. When I did go ahead and speak with Jeffrey Hubbard, I never even realized that he had a lot of serious problems as a superintendent in our district, never imagining the real story was he wasn't keeping my child safe and other people's children safe and teachers safe, that they lost and they quit their jobs. I had shared, I think, at Kelly Brook in 2007, the drinking on the job, and I also want to work with the police department. When people come forward...
Thank you.
...they shouldn't feel afraid, and we can all work together to make it a safer community. Thank you for your time.
Next.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Ron Hendrickson, and I wanted to speak for a moment on the upcoming municipal election. First, I wanted to thank the city, I guess the staff, for putting the municipal election on the very front page of the city website now. It's up on the left-hand corner, and so our citizens can check it out and be able to get to have some readable sections of what's going on, because on our sample ballots, it's a bit difficult to read the red light, the city charter changes. So getting on the website, I think, is great, and I want the viewing public to know that, get to our city website, City Newport Beach, and you'll find the information is much easier to read and absorb. I wanted to speak about Measure EE in particular, and first note that I am opposed to Measure EE, and I wanted to comment in particular on the city's arguments in favor of EE and their rebuttal against the argument against EE. And for the residents, in the rear of your sample ballot, you will find all of our city stuff, really all that we're dealing with is Measure EE this year. We're finding that strong public opinion is objecting to the one yes or no vote on Measure EE, and we believe the reason for this last-minute addition of prohibition of red light cameras, which really doesn't belong in the charter and which most people dislike, I believe is the real reason why we're incorporating that item into our charter changes. Another item that is bothersome is the statement that the city's full audit is required to be published annually, and on the basis of that, it's being indicated that there's substantial huge savings in costs, which the opposition doesn't want to save, which of course is not correct. But the bottom line is, the city charter does not require the publication of the audit, and it hasn't been published for years and years. So if you want to take the argument that it does in fact require it, the publication of the audit, then the city's been in violation of the charter for many years. So I think we can get over that one and realize that the corrections that are being made in there now are appropriate, and I think do the refinements necessary to make it absolutely Also, in the argument against the argument against the charter amendments is one that deals with the compensation, which was talked about here just a few moments ago, and I just want to point out that in 402, there is no discussion of the $19,000 that you receive.
Thank you.
So the public needs to know that, that it's not in the charter, so it's not clear and transparent.
Thank you.
Vote no on EE. Thank you very much.
My name is Naveel Hendrickson, and I am a seventh-generation American whose ancestors fought and died in serving our country from the revolution to today, protecting us and keeping our freedoms, including our right to vote. And when I say that, I mean we have the right to vote for one question. We as Americans should not be ready to have our city government trivialize our vote in the name of cleanup, efficiency, expediency, and cost. This is not what our country is based on. Why does this council ask the residents both on the 210 revision of the charter, as well as this new rewrite in 2012? What does this tell you? It tells me that this is a second rewrite of our charter in just two years. And in the last few pages of our sample ballot, you can see the small type of red line sections which have been struck out or added. The charter is our constitution and seems to be a favorite for some council members, often either running for another term or in need to find something that they personally need fixing. What happened on July 10th, city council meeting, when the charter update report was presented, and the city needed to finish everything that evening, because on the 24th meeting, there would be a special election formed for November 6th? There were questions, both from Rob Houston and our city attorney, Aaron Harp. They needed direction, asking how many questions for the ballot, meaning amendments, or how to group them to get... the ballot, meaning amendments, or how to group them together. Our council said, "Just one vote on all 38," six to zero, with Ms. Deagle being absent. From going from the study session to the night—that night meeting—for a final vote is being used by this council more recently, and the public is denied the ability to speak, and not in the spirit of the 411 citizen participation, which is in our charter, that section. This decision is, well, it's a last-minute add-on by Councilman Curry. Red light cameras was the last draw for me. I stand here and say no, and I will never let my vote go for so many items, and that's it. So no on Measure EE.
Thank you. Next, please.
Robert Hawkins, City of Newport Beach. Last council meeting, I, in public comment, testified about the class action ban that was proposed. I referenced the case Arden versus City of Los Angeles. Mr. Curry, in a similar fashion to the query regarding compensation of Mr. Harp today, asked Mr. Harp, "Is this okay? I mean, does Arden stand for this provision?" And Mr. Harp said, "Yes, Arden allows or recommends a ban on class actions." Well, I have copies of Arden. For each of you, I will put copies out in the lobby. Mr. Kiff, if you'd be so kind. Thank you. If you can find it, good luck. What was presented to the Charter Committee—good luck, it's not there. There is no provision. There is no statement that what you need to do is just ban class actions. What was presented to the Charter Committee—not the Commission—the committee—was an email. This is the only thing they had. They didn't have this—from—who is it? Mike Torres. He's the Acting Assistant City Attorney, I believe. And he said—and I'm going to quote it, and then I've got copies for you. Well, why don't I just pass these out to you. Mr. Kiff, thank you. At the bottom of the first paragraph, he says, "The court held class claims for tax refunds against a local government entity are permissible in the absence of a specific tax refund procedure set forth in the applicable governing claims statute." What that means is, you can set up your claims statute so that classes don't qualify as a claimant. But that's not what we're doing here. That's what I said last time. That's not what we're doing here. We're banning wholesale class action. And as I indicated last time, the Supreme Court has held that that is preempted by Rule 23 of the Federal Rules of Civil Procedure. I mean, this is clear. So we're going to be spending our hard-earned money on attorney's fees defending something that cannot be defended. So, once again, no on Measure EE. We now have a website. You'll be happy to know. It is no two—the number two—measureee.com. We look forward to your contributions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. All right. Saying note for their public comment. Just a minute. I'd just like to close public comment. Go ahead, Councilman Deagle.
With respect to the comments made by the last speaker, is what's proposed in the charter in any way a denial of justice?
No. I'm surprised Mr. Hawkins is so adamant against this provision. In essence, what it requires is that if each particular claimant—if any person in the city has an issue with the city, they are welcome to file a claim. And if there's groups of people, there's 10 or 20, they can all file a claim together and basically get their grievances addressed. What this prohibits is, basically, lawyers who really don't have—maybe have nefarious reasons for bringing claims to generate their own attorney's fees—from, basically, putting together kind of fake claims in order to cause the city to incur attorney's fees and to generate more attorney's fees for these attorneys without the real supposed victims getting any benefit from it. So justice is not being denied to any person who has a legitimate grievance against the city.
Mayor Pro Tem Curry.
The claim was made that—the argument that publishing the audit in the newspaper was not correct. In fact, the document that needs to be published in the newspaper is called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the CAFER. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, that's correct. And it's approximately 200 pages.
208 pages, to be exact. Let me ask the city clerk. You did some analysis on what it would cost to publish that document in the newspaper on an annual basis, which is what the charter says we're supposed to do. And how much is that on an annual basis? Would that be that we would be saving by repealing that provision?
The estimate received from the daily pilot was approximately $13,000 to $18,000 to publish it in its entirety for a single day.
And what that would mean is that we would take a 208-page document, print it in newsprint, and throw it on not everybody's front step, but those that subscribed either the Times or the Register. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now move on to public hearing, oral reports. Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped that. Oral reports. Councilman Hill.
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky.
Nothing, thank you.
See, that's why I skipped. Mayor Pro Tem Curry.
I had the opportunity yesterday, as part of the Association of Cities, to sit with Mayor Jerry Sanders, the mayor of San Diego, and talk with him about pension reform and what they've been doing in San Diego. Mayor Sanders, who's a former chief of police, a 22-year city employee in San Diego, has really come on and taken the lead and instituted some very, very creative reforms in San Diego. He was successful at getting them qualified for the ballot and enacted by the voters. San Diego, of course, has its own pension system, so they have greater flexibility than we do. But it was great to sit with him, and as he came up to Orange County, to talk to other Orange County leaders about how to get a meaningful pension reform, working with your employees, and to keep his city running and fiscally sound. And I found it very inspirational.
Thank you. Councilwoman Deagle.
Yes. As one of the trustees of the vector control, it's an arm of the county, and they are here to help eradicate vectors. And so they've asked the city to accept their video for our city broadcasts, and it's on actions that residents can take to reduce the potential for contracting West Nile virus. We're actually spraying—or the vector control is spraying for it—in Big Canyon Creek. So don't go down there at night because there's a vehicle with a fogger, and there's all kinds of mist. But that is an area of active spraying. So here you go.
Councilman Hen.
I have nothing.
Councilman Selich.
No reports.
And I have nothing. All right. Now for the public hearing, and this is on the annual review of the Zoning Implementation and Public Benefit Agreement for Sober Living by the Sea.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gardner. Melinda Whelan is going to give an overview of the staff report, and this is the third review of the zoning implementation and benefit agreement. And with that, I'll turn it over to Melinda.
Lights, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Melinda Whelan, Planning Division. So I will give a brief background. In 2009, the city entered into a zoning agreement with Sober Living by the Sea, and this agreement provides detailed requirements for the number and location of their facilities, and also provides requirements for the operational standards of their facilities. Like Kim said, this is the third annual compliance review, which is a requirement of the zoning agreement. And the previous two reviews, the city council found Sober Living by the Sea to be in compliance with the zoning agreement. This is a map depicting the existing Sober Living by the Sea facilities. The green indicates the open facilities, and the blue indicates the closed facilities. Currently, there are 10 facilities open with a total of 75 beds. This is a 63% decrease since the 2008. So as part of the zoning agreement, the zoning agreement also memorialized operational standards for the Villa Way facility. The Villa Way facility provides administrative offices and also meeting rooms for clients for Sober Living by the Sea. This year, we have found them in compliance with all of the operational conditions, including the off-site parking spaces, which are secured at 532nd Street, and also the cap on the number of attendees at each of their meetings throughout the year. This map shows the Villa Way facility location, and also the off-site parking at 532nd Street. So also, a requirement of the zoning agreement are compliance review reports, which are required to be submitted by Sober Living by the Sea twice a year. They report the current facility locations and the number of client beds. And as I stated before, Sober Living by the Sea currently reports a total of 75 client beds, which is well within the limits of the zoning agreement. Also, a part of the zoning agreement is a requirement for code enforcement inspections for the zoning administration, and to verify that the location of the facilities and the number of clients and beds and bedrooms are accurate, and also to review the overall cleanliness of each of the facilities and all of the operational standards. For 2012, the exterior and interior inspections were all found to be in compliance with the zoning agreement. There were a few complaints received during the 2012 year. They were immediately addressed by Sober Living by the Sea and did not result in any violations. So in conclusion, staff's review of Sober Living by the Sea's operations indicates they have made a good faith effort to comply with the zoning agreement, and the next annual review would be presented to city council in October 2013. So staff recommends that the city council find that Sober Living by the Sea has demonstrated a good faith, compliance with the terms of the zoning agreement, zoning implementation and benefit agreement, and receive and file documents submitted by Sober Living by the Sea, which are found in Attachment A of the staff report. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
And then, of course.
And I also wanted to mention that staff—this evening, staff received correspondence from the public stating concern that a facility at 3206 and 3206 and 1/2 Balboa Boulevard was a new facility opened by Sober Living by the Sea, and the staff does not have any evidence that this facility is related to Sober Living by the Sea. It is on our list of facilities that is on our website, and it is under a different operator. And the Sober Living by the Sea staff is available for questions on this.
Is that the one they're referring to? Is that a license, 600, or?
It's not. It's unlicensed, but it received reasonable accommodation by Balboa Recovery.
All right. Any questions for staff? Public comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is Laura Curran. I'd like to thank the city staff and the council for careful attention to the Sober Living by the Sea agreement and for management of Sober Living by the Sea according to an agreement and a use permit process. As most people may be aware, the agreement and use permit process provide conditions which neighbors can rely upon for operating of a facility, and so that if there are complaints, the city has a charter and a discussion about how to address those complaints that the operator has agreed to. And all city residents are really entitled to due process when they live near one of these facilities under the 2008 group homes ordinance. And I would like to ask the city to extend this right of due process and this use permit process to all of the integral facilities in Newport Beach. For example, Miramar Recovery operates integral facility at 435 Dahlia—excuse me, 435 Dahlia—and 435 and 1/2 Dahlia. It's an integral facility, which means it's operated with two properties next to each other by the same operator. And this was confirmed in documents filed by Miramar with ADP and with the Orange County Superior Court, in statements by Derek Bryan, the owner of the facilities, and in letters by Dave Kiff and other city staff to ADP, going back to 2008. Without a use permit agreement, which the city has not yet enforced with Miramar or entered into with Miramar, the residents have limited recourse despite repeated violations. And while code enforcement is very willing to look at violations and to follow up, there's really no document which says, "Here's what Miramar has agreed to." And these violations include things such as noise, smoking, violation of the fire code because you're operating a facility for 12 people in a dense residential area, and the refusal to provide the names of managers to residents as required by ADP. So council has made significant efforts to address these issues, and we all spent a lot of time in 2007, 2008, to draft and pass the group homes ordinance to provide oversight of integral facilities. And I would ask you to move forward with enforcement and completion of the group homes ordinance and provide that same due process and implementation of the use permit process for all of the facilities that are integral facilities or appear to be integral facilities in Newport Beach. And this provides protection to the residents in the same manner as provided to Sober Living by the Sea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right. Bring it back. Do I have a motion?
I'll recommend an action.
I'll second.
Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item number 15. We have a tentative date of October 16th for a special meeting, but I'm going to suggest, because there's some conflicts with council agendas already, that we hold this item—we have a special meeting that begins ahead of our regular meeting, the second meeting in October. So that would be—
So that would be the Tuesday, the 23rd.
October 23rd, and we would start the special meeting at, say, 4:00 p.m. in the council chamber. Is there any public comment on this?
All right, move the item.
All right. Is it a second?
Second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. And now for current business, the October 28 Memorial Bike Ride. Councilwoman Deagle.
Is there a staff report?
We could give you a staff report if you'd like. I can do a brief summary of what this item asks for. This is something that I worked on with the Finance Department, which involves the setting up of a bike safety improvement fund, where the city would match on a three-to-one basis. So the city would match with $3 for every $1 contributed, up to $450,000, for bicycle safety improvements, and that that match could include grant awards that we competed for through Measure M. So that's one item of this, to set up that fund. And then, secondly, to have the city act as a sponsor to a memorial bike ride set for Sunday, October 28th. It will be at Newport Center. I think Councilmember Deagle knows more about that, and allow us to cover some of the fees associated with that setting up. And also, the third action suggests that Public Works has—and they've done this already, will, and they have done this already—set up a number of projects through the Bike Safety Committee that would implement those projects. And some of those are summarized in the staff report. So welcome your questions or comments.
Councilwoman Deagle.
I don't have any comments at this stage. Be interested in how others feel about the item.
All right. Any questions of staff or any immediate comments? Otherwise, I'll open it for public comment. All right. Their public comment on this item. Please come forward.
And also, the third action suggests that Public Works has, and they've done this already, will, and they have done this already, set up a number of projects through the Bike Safety Committee that would implement those, those projects. And some of those are summarized in the staff report. So welcome your questions or comments.
Councilman Dagle?
If you don't have any comments at this stage, be interested in how others feel about the item.
All right. Any questions of staff or any immediate comments? Otherwise, I'll open it for public comment. All right, there are public comment on this item. Please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and Mr. Kiff. My name is Cameron Phillips. I represent a cycling club called Team Simple Green Bike Religion. We are a club about 250 strong in the greater Orange County area. Many of us traverse through your fine town. I happen to live in an adjacent town, but we do traverse through your town, and we do take in consideration any effort that the city can engage in with respect to bicycle safety and pedestrian safety. Public safety is a close thing to my life. I spent thirty years in the fire department up in Garden Grove, and I was a mayor, actually mayor. I was a fire chief my last five years. I'm retired now. So I wanted to speak in support of this measure and this plan that Council Mendeagle has, Councilwoman Mendeagle has, and we look forward to be part of the memorial ride and any efforts in the future that we can enjoy as we ride our bikes through the fine city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other, other public comment on this item?
Good evening. My name is Laura Curran, members of council, city staff. So the Bike Safety Fund is a great initiative, and it really represents a gesture by citizens to try to get some momentum around a topic that they feel strongly about. But I would say that a $450,000 fund, I hope, is the beginning of something and not the end, because our efforts to bike safety, Mayor Gardner has really invested a lot of time in this over the last several years, they're laudable, but they're insufficient. We need more comprehensive planning and dedicated safe routes for bikes that demonstrate a commitment to dedicated pathways for bikes and for walkers, so that we have good multimodal circulation at the same service levels for all of our modes of transportation. So Newport Beach likes to call itself a world-class city. We go through the benchmarking exercises and talk about what makes a world-class city. Well, if you think of cities such as San Francisco, New York City, Amsterdam, Palo Alto, Washington DC, cities in South America, and Portland, for example, that have invested in biking, they've made a dedicated infrastructure for cycling and for pedestrians a part of what they define as being world-class. So we need to be thinking about things such as separated bike lanes, synchronized lights and signals, and having plans to make it impossible to miss the marking that a bike is going to be crossing on a street, that a bike can ride on the street. And I would say a great example is recently Frank Peters and the Bike Newport Group did a video where they showed at 32nd Street here, people cross across this direction of traffic because they're not aware that cyclist can go where there's not a crosswalk. How about a nice big green stripe so people realize that the crosswalk is a place where there's going to be people walking and bikes going? Simple things. At the same time, we also need to think about in a comprehensive planning mode, which enables bike riders to transit and safety. And that means we really come up with some big hairy ideas, such as separated bike lanes, bridges and under crossings, synchronized signals, and really visible street markings. And I think the council actually has shown a commendable commitment to bike safety and to ped safety, and should replicate that. And by that, I would say, we are building a $2 million bridge at San Miguel, and the stated reasons for that $2 million bridge were in part to improve circulation, but also to make it safer for people walking between the upper park and the lower park. So we need to be thinking with that same commitment to where do we have crossings, such as Bison or Benita Canyon on MacArthur, where we've had pedestrian and bike accidents? What can we do on Newport Coast that goes where traffic is at 50 miles an hour to make it clear to people that bikes are also traveling? What can we do to make it possible for a bike to travel safely in all areas of our city? And let's take that same commitment to $2 million for one bridge and translate it, and put on our thinking caps and our creativity and come up with a comprehensive plan that we fund, that we fund as significantly as we fund other transit options, and really become a city where multimodal transit is, is our first priority, and bike riders and walkers feel as safe as drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to wish you success with this venture, and I also wanted to remind you of a section of our charter that is very apropos to the effort that you are undertaking here. A reminder that may be necessary because it appears that the Mayor Pro Tem and perhaps even the city attorney have not really carefully read our city charter. There is no requirement in our city charter to file, to publish in a newspaper a $18,000 financial report. The requirement is to file a statement, which is something we do for $114.
Mr. Mosher.
Does this have something, excuse me, Ms. Mosher, we're talking about the bike?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. As I said, the reminder appeared necessary because some of you don't seem to be familiar with the content of the city charter. Section 1113 of the city charter provides you power through the people to create what are called special capital improvement funds. Those funds are intended, under the charter provision, to remain inviolate for the purpose that they are set up for, and the money is asked to remain in the fund until it has been expended on the purpose for which it was put in the fund. We apparently have some sort of informal gentleman's agreement that the money that we collect for this will be spent on bicycle safety. The charter provides you a mechanism for ensuring that that will happen. I know some of you think that the charter is a pesty obstacle to efficient operation, but the charter is in fact the tool the people have given you to manage our city. I think it would be wise for you to use it and not to regard it as something that needs to be massively mangled every two years. Thank you.
I guess that was sort of on the subject.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I did want to personally invite Jim to the memorial ride, Sunday, eight o'clock, so, bring your water bottle.
And, and just to be clear, let me ask the city attorney once again, Mr. Mosher made representations that the requirement to publish the comprehensive annual financial report is in fact not a requirement. Is he being truthful in that statement?
I do not believe he's being accurate in that statement. It is a requirement that it be fully published, and the cost of approximately $13,000 to $18,000 per day.
Thank you.
All right, is there other public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council. My name is April Morris, and I'm one of the organizers working with the city of Newport Beach on the memorial ride and working with the cyclists. And you should know, for the last nine days, we've now collected $18,728 approximately, with the lowest contribution being a dollar by some of the kids who are riding bikes on the streets of Newport Beach. This is a very serious matter, and we really appreciate your attention to this. We appreciate the matching possibility, and we really appreciate a thorough investigation and plan for bike safety for all of us, including our next generation. Thank you.
April, I know some people do things at the last minute. If they show up for the ride, will there be an opportunity if they want to write a check or something at that moment, for somebody to accept it?
Yes, so we, we have some volunteers from some of the bike groups who will be there to help out, and then we are also working on a separate event. We've had so many companies give us ideas for raffles, that we're going to have a separate fundraising event after the bike ride. We were originally going to have a raffle because we only had two or three items, but now that's not the case any longer, so there's just not enough time on a 1.2 mile ride. But we have a lot of kids coming, and the way it's going to work is the families and kids will lead the procession, and then all the rest of the bikers will go after that for the 1.2 mile ride, and then the bikers who want to continue on, on a continuous route will do so. So right now, I think we have about 200 bikers showing up at this point. We're only two weeks into it.
Can you have a website, two you want to talk about, a website?
Yes, our website is www.nuitportbeachmemorialride.com. You can sign up there. If you donate, it goes straight to the city's Bicycle Safety Improvement Fund. We don't touch the money. The money goes straight to the city's fund that was set up by your finance department. They did a great job. They worked, they did their, we did, we did the website in 24 hours, and they did their integration in 24 hours, so it worked very well. So really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
What's the latest on where everybody meets in Whole Foods?
Yeah, everybody's going to meet at Whole Foods. The procession will start just on the north side of Whole Foods, and we're going to do a circle that will be going all to the right. We wanted to avoid it all left-hand turns, because you have kids there, we just didn't want left-hand turns. And so it will be a procession to the right, and most, most of the bikers are going to wear either the wristbands, which I have some if anybody wants any, and/or the T-shirts for that one-mile ride, which says Share the Road, basically. It's black with lime green, so, and you can pick those up and, you know, contribute $15 for a T-shirt or a dollar for a wristband or...
At, at the day of the event?
I'm not sure at the day of the event. We don't have any way to take a credit card when they're there, so some of it will have to be on, you know...
So if you want a T-shirt or a bracelet, then you should be doing, go to the website.
In advance, yeah, in advance, yes, exactly. And those were donated, so we got the T-shirts donated, we got the screen printing donated by somebody who's a biker and a screen printer. The only thing we had to pay for was the wristbands for $750. That was it. So, so far, so good. Or $3,100, so please start giving them away. Any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there other public comment? All right, seeing none? A motion?
I would move the item.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second it, and I also wanted to thank a number of people, the mayor for her consistent leadership on cycling safety. It's not an easy issue, involves people's lives, it involves, at times, different uses on the road. Also, our police department for all their leadership and ongoing education. And Dan was mentioned, he's our new finance director. He's been with the city for a long time, so this is an initial project for Dan, so thanks for your help. And also, the airline company that's loaning Fashion Island for the morning, we appreciate that. And, and also for our public work staff. It's been a ton of work, all these improvements, and when I became aware of what the city is doing, we have done quite a few improvements. We've been a little slow getting the word out, but we're going to catch up, and, and there's just been significant infrastructure improvements in our city, and there's a bunch of improvements lined up, so we are making progress. I think our community has a great base to work from in terms of trails and paths and lanes, and we're just going to keep moving forward, so thank you.
All right, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. A motion for reconsideration? A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side. Is there a motion for reconsideration? We are going to adjourn. Mayor Pro Tem, Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask us to adjourn tonight in the memory of a man that I had lunch with every day for many very formative years, and perhaps many of you did as well, and that's John Rovick, otherwise better known as Sheriff John. Sheriff John had a program on daytime television in Southern California that affected the lives of thousands of Southern California preschoolers growing up. I was one of them. He, we had lunch with John every day. He taught us to say the Pledge of Allegiance. He taught us to say grace, and taught us to live life with grace. He passed away in Boise, Idaho at 93 years old, and he will be missed because he made life a gentler and better place in Southern California.
I certainly remember him. With that, the meeting is adjourned.